Alright, hi everyone, welcome to today's video. On the day that it's being recorded, it is Monday, February twenty, uh... God damn it, February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. It's Monday, well, like I already... I already said what today was, um, but I'm going to a city council meeting. And it's the last one of February. And hopefully, it'll be the last one with, uh... Last one with, uh, snow on the ground. Okay, cool. Temperature? It's about forty-five degrees. Most, almost all the snow has melted. Which is a good thing, but also it's a bad thing because, well, when the snow all melts, it gets really, really muddy. And I don't like that. If there's one thing I hate is I hate stepping in mud. Not only for my shoes, but for my pants, like, the very, like, the cuffs of, like, pant legs. I hate that so much. So, uh, yeah, it's a little nippy out, but it ain't too bad for being about forty-five degrees out. So... Um, I currently have a, uh, secret project going on for the channel. Actually, more like two secrets, uh, projects for the channel. Um, you'll, you'll find out one day soon, uh, what they are. Uh, it's pretty cool if I say so myself of what it is. But, uh, again, it's secret, I'm not gonna give out too much information on it. And, uh, yeah, that's all I'm gonna say. Um, I did post a, a video not too long ago. About owning a, well, getting a cool flag in the mail. Which, uh, that's part of it. No, I'm not gonna redo my entire flag series. Although, on the subject of redoing some series... Well, I mean... The flags kind of was one I had a mind of possibly maybe coming back? And like redoing just a little bit? But, uh, I don't know. I kinda want to, but at the same time, I kinda don't want to. Either cuz I just want to redo it for simplicity sake? Or whatever, but, yeah. Um, I do plan, and I do want to kinda redo my president series. But do like... Do like a recap? Of do like two or three, uh, facts from each episode? And kinda do them all into, uh, one big video? Uh, throughout time? I mean, that could be a good thing for President's Day next year, in twenty twenty-six. But, um, I don't know. I do kinda wanna go back and redo the, uh, the Congress series a little bit. Like, explain like what Congress was what? Uh... What each Congress was, when they meet, where did they meet, and what party controlled, uh, each House of Congress? Cuz... Like, as an overall permanent location for Congress, they've only met in really three places. Federal Hall in New York City. Uh, Congress Hall in Philadelphia. And the Capitol Building in Washington. Cuz, well... Those were the, uh... They were the, uh, the capitals of America at the time. Um... The capital of America has moved several times, both during and after, uh, the, the revolution. Everyone always likes to assume, well, he- here's the thing. We kinda didn't really have a capital before the revolution, I mean, we kinda did. It was more or less accepted that Philadelphia was our, like, colonial capital. I mean, yeah, each of the, uh, the colonies had like its own capital. Like Massachusetts had Boston. New York had, you know, New York. Uh, Pennsylvania probably had Philadelphia because I'm pretty sure their capital today is, uh, Harrisburg. I think it's more towards the center of the state. Uh, let's see here. Maryland had Baltimore. Virginia had Richmond. South Carolina had Charleston, and Georgia had Savannah. These were like state capitals during the run of time of the revolution. I mean, a lot of them would change, you know, as time went on, but the capital of the US has moved quite a lot. Through, as far as I know of. In different locations across Pennsylvania. But the main city in Pennsylvania that has been the capital of the US uh, multiple times is, well, Philadelphia. Cuz, you know, that's where the... That's where the Second Continental Congress was throughout most of the war. Uh, it's where the, uh... The Declaration of Independence was signed in Independence Hall. Uh... It's where, uh, Washington was unanimously nominated to be, uh, Commander in Chief of the Continental Army. Um, uh, let's see here. Well, it must be six o'clock, I just gotta think about raid hours since it's, uh, Road to Univa Tour week. Cuz, uh, there's supposed to be Genesect raids, and like, all the forms of Genesect, with or without a drive. You know, it's elemental type for its, uh, for its signature move Technoblask. Which apparently can be shiny. Um, let's see here. Rubhub, it's like Pornhub. Um, let's see here. But yeah, Philadelphia was also the capital for a little bit after the revolution. Until, uh, I think like seventeen eighty-nine. Cuz from... Seventeen eighty-nine, pretty much all of seventeen eighty-nine, as far as I know of, the capital was, uh... Washington DC, or, no, the capital was, uh, New York City. And then the, there was a deal made by some people to figure out where the location of the federal capital will be. Um, let's see here. So... They agreed that... Cuz here's the thing, most of the southern states didn't want to have a national debt. But they wanted a southern national capital, like halfway. But the north, like the northern states, wanted to have a national debt, but didn't want to have a southern national capital. So... A lot of people within the first administration and the first Congress had to make some form of a deal where... So where the north got what they wanted and the south got what they wanted. I mean, it was mostly led by, on Volps on either side, was really Alexander Hamilton, who was the Treasury Secretary. And Congressman, uh, James Madison. It was known as the issue of assumption. And it was kind of the beginning on how relations with, relations between the north and south would become. So... Cuz, uh, Virginia paid off most of its war debt. And so, at the very end, Alexander Hamilton got the funding that he needed to establish a, a federal national debt. Which probably wasn't even that much back then, it was probably maybe... Uh... I would say it'd be at least worth a couple thousand dollars in today's money, at least. I would assume so. Uh, I might have to look that up actually and get back with you on that. But anyways... Hamilton got the funding for a national debt. And the southerners got the federal capital. That would be located on land that would eventually belong to Virginia. But of course, when it came to selecting the location itself, uh, Washington put, uh, made that decision. He, you know, picked us an area swamp known as Foggy Bottom. Which would be unofficially known as the city of Washington. And it was actually one of the first major issues under Washington's administration. So, yeah. Okay, let's see here. So yeah, it would be later known as Washington. Um, now here, here's my thing. The federal capital at the time of Washington's inauguration was New York City. But of course, for ten years, from seventeen ninety until about eighteen hundred, the capital was... Uh, the capital was, uh, Philadelphia in Pennsylvania. But by the time eighteen hundred rolled around, the White House was more or less done. The original House and Senate chambers were finished. But they were still working on the Supreme Court building. So while the federal government moved down to Washington from Philadelphia, they were kinda also still in the process of, uh, finishing up as well. Okay. So yeah. Now, I could probably do a whole video about explaining the history of the capital of the United States in full. Cuz, uh, as of right now, for the last two-hundred-and, uh, twenty-five years, it's been Washington DC, and we haven't moved our federal capital, uh, ever since. Although, at one point, there was a proposal to move the federal capital more inward. It was also part of our history where we, it was long after we bought the Louisiana Purchase. And, uh, yeah, all that other stuff. But yeah, I could probably do that. I could probably do it, uh, whenever, uh, Washington's birthday is, like, not President Washington, but, uh, Washington DC, when it officially became, uh, the nation's capital. If I had to take a guess, I would guess probably maybe, uh, March fourth of eighteen hundred. Which would be the last year of... Of, uh... Of the presidency of John Adams. But, you know, again, that would be my guess. So I'll have to do a little, uh... I'll have to do a little, uh, inquiring. I'll make some inquiries. And then we'll kinda, uh, go from there. Cuz that would be a nice little cool topic to talk about for a video. What I think at least. Okay. So I left the house at about ten till five, or no, ten till six. Oh, God. I'm ready for spring. I'm ready for when all of this, where the grass is just all green. The sidewalks are all mostly dry. Except for maybe a few noticeable, like, rain puddles here and there. But, uh... Yeah. But, uh, just to clarify and to reiterate again within the same video, uh, there is, uh, more than likely two secret projects in, uh, currently in the works. That will be going up, uh, at some undetermined time. It's a surprise, so you guys will really like that. And it is something that we kind of... One of the two of the secret side projects that I have planned has been done, it has, well, it has been touched on uh, back in April of this year, twenty twenty-five. I'm trying to think about the future tense, the future past tense. Cuz, you know, this is being pre-recorded, it's gonna go up whenever it does. So I don't know if it's gonna go up, if this will be up after April. I would hope it would be. It just, uh, depends on what happens. But, uh, yeah. I'm gonna hope that it's not too terribly cold uh, when the city council gets out. Now, my thing is that... Am I gonna, now... Someone asked me once before on if I'm gonna make, uh, opinion videos on like certain topics of like current state of, like, current, like, current events. Whether it be domestically or abroad, or whatever. Uh, it was actually uh, a patient that I was talking to, I was taking him to, uh, uh, won their test, I don't remember what it was, but that's just it, you know, in general. Uh, the patient asked me, uh, what do I do for fun, I was like, "Well, uh, I make, uh, I make YouTube videos about like, uh, all things history and politics." And they were like, "Oh, that's cool, so is it like, based on current events, or just like cer- certain things in general?" I was like, "Oh, it's gonna be like, like, things in general, like, like, like the current Congress makeup and..." You know, talk, like, brief journalism of like federal departments, uh, Supreme Court, you know, that type of stuff, she's like, "Oh, okay, that's cool." "Would you ever do something with like, talking about current events?" I was like, "I don't know." I honestly don't know, I kinda would, it would be kinda cool, but I don't know how I could base my opinion on it. Cuz what I could do is I could look at the same article, or articles of the same topic. Yeah, I could look at the, at the same topic from like multiple articles. Come to some form of a common ground with them, and base my opinion. And just unfortunately, there's, you know... Yeah, unfortunately, there's just... There's always a, uh... There's always a, a major news outlet that's biased to one side or the other. Like for the liberal, there's a lot more liberal uh, news outlets than like uh, conservative. Cuz the main conservative one that everyone kinda defaults to is, uh, Fox News. Which, you know, is true. I mean, I guess NPR could be considered more conservative. I don't know, that's kind of a weird one. But for the liberal side, you got ABC, CBS, NBC, uh, CNN, MSNBC, uh, New York Times, Washington Post, Los Angeles Times, and... You know. You know, that kinda stuff. They're always all based on either the left or the right. As like an overall, you know, basis. Okay, so, by going off of how long I've been recording, I would say that it's about twenty after six. And, uh, well, I'm coming up to the county building, and then across the street will be, uh, City Hall, which is also where the police station is. We're gonna go ahead and, uh, end this video off here, cuz I got some messages I gotta reply back to while I still have the chance of being outside. Alright, thanks so much for watching, like, comment, and subscribble. Um, I doubted, I don't think I'm probably gonna record on the way back. But I'll probably be on my phone playing Pokemon Go on the way back. But I'll probably be on my phone playing Pokemon Go on the way back. I don't know yet, I haven't figured it out. But uh we'll see you next time.